All rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everybody, welcome residents and special guests and visitors. Any visitors or public comments tonight? Ms. Rowley?
Good evening everyone. I sent something to you, a letter about the Marcellus Jail impact fee law which is going to affect municipalities because it's going to remove from municipalities a control over oil and gas drilling that might occur in your township. Now, I don't believe that we're going to have immediate oil drilling in Doylestown Township, but I think it sets a very bad precedent for the state and for all municipalities that the government, the state can come in and take over the gas and oil operations in their communities. So, I was hoping to hear a response. Chairman Lyons sent me a thank you, but I haven't-
I looked into all of your materials, went online, looked at the new legislation, Act 13 is in effect. I learned that most of the provisions don't affect Bucks County. And I understand that the local control over zoning is really the issue, but in terms of whether it's going to affect us in Central Bucks or Bucks County is questionable. So, I didn't know where to go with it. And I don't know if the rest of the board has any comment on that, but at that point, I, you know, it was signed into law by the governor on, I think, February 14th. And I think what's going to happen is the legislature is going to see how it operates in the various parts of the state. And there will probably be modifications over the next, you know, modifications to the bill, sorry, to the law, over the next 12 to 18 months. So, I think that's what we have to wait for to see how it's going to impact and what ramifications there are on the local communities. But for us in Doylestown Township, as you correctly point out, and to most of Bucks County, it's not going to be applicable.
Well, one good reason it's not going to be applicable is because the Delaware River Basin Commission is not allowing drilling and we're in that protection right now.
And we have you to thank for that largely.
Well, I thank you also for sending a letter asking that the public comment period be increased because they did get 69 signatures.
Excellent.
This is not something that people want.
I understand.
They don't want it to happen. And also, the request I made in the letter was that perhaps you would want to be a part of a challenge to the law because there are communities in Central Bucks where they've advised their solicitor to prepare a challenge. And I understand that there are about 40 municipalities that have decided to do that.
I haven't seen the challenge. I did see the two letters that you sent where the representatives from those municipalities were going to ask their solicitors what can be done.
Uh huh.
And at that point, nothing could be done. It was law. So, like I said, I think what everyone's waiting to see is how it's going to operate in the rest of the state and see what, if any, impact it might have. Where we actually have some effect on the legislation, right now, we don't because we're not impacted by it. So, whether we're on board with some kind of opposition is going to have no effect. However, let's see what the opposition, or let's see what the problems are that may develop, and then we'll be more likely to have a position that will be effective. Okay? So, you'll keep a surprise.
I certainly will.
I bet you would. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Any other comments or visitors' concerns? Out of boys. Okay, good. Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, March 20th. Daylight savings time, folks. March 11th. Set your clocks ahead one hour. I think that affects early Sunday morning. And also, it's recommended that you check your smoke detectors. The annual mother-daughter tea and craft is Sunday, March 25th, at Del Valle Market. We're going to host Birdtown Training Session on March 17th, 9:30 to 2:30, at the Activity Center, the red building behind. And more information on our website, please. At the conclusion of this meeting, we are going to recognize our own Berry Chief, Stephen White. So, stay here, don't leave. Minutes, next item on the general, looking for minutes approval for the February 21st meeting.
Move for approval.
Any corrections, comments? Is there a second?
I'll second. And I do have one comment. I think our township engineer, his name is spelled wrong, other than that, right in the very beginning.
Correction noted. With that correction, all in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye, five and oh. Correspondence from Colonial Heritage. Mr. Harrison wrote a letter. We've all received a copy of this letter dated February 14th, 2012. Ms. Mason did respond to the representative of Colonial Heritage, the owner, and did outline the actual participation by the township with our website. And I think everyone is satisfied with that result, and I will respond to Mr. Harrison directly and in a correspondence, if that's okay with everybody, just to outline that the matter has been resolved. Reports from the solicitor.
I have one matter on the agenda, and that is that township regulates, in some respects, trash collection and pickup in the township. And there have been some difficulties with the folks coming out at 5:00 as opposed to 6:00 to pick up trash. And during the course of that, obviously, this ordinance goes back 30-some years, it was noticed by Sandra that the penalty provision did not fit the current state of the law. So, I think what we're asking for tonight is the authorization to prepare an amendment to that ordinance to modify the penalty provision to meet the current requirements.
Move for approval.
I'll second. I have kind of discussion on that. Yes, thank you Sandra for making that correction in the proposed amendment. Why, why don't we just revoke their license if they go early? Can we, I mean, can we do that in this-
We have all our trash collectors having to revoke, because I think there were three that were on that list that you sent, that you emailed out recently, who were there at 5:00 o'clock versus-
Let me just say, actually, it came through me, through Sandra, because she's in charge of that program. The penalty was a misdemeanor, which meant that it was a criminal offense, and it was too significant for the nature of the offense. The first step would be a fine and cost. It'll get their attention, and then if they continue to misbehave, you can revoke their license, I would suggest.
Can we give them like three chances in any given year?
The board can give them, the governing body can give them whatever they want. All I would like is that it'd be a summary offense instead of a misdemeanor offense, so we can give them a fine and cost or warnings, whatever you want to do.
That's fine, but in addition, I think that we could revoke their license if-
We can revoke their license, but I don't know how much we are licensed actually. Our license is not, I mean, Jeff and you are better, but-
Let me say, first of all, we've been preempted in most of the elements of trash collection by the state. All we can do is regulate certain minor things, and our license is more of a who's out there collecting than it is enforcement.
Right.
So, we can certainly enforce the hours of pickup on a nuisance theory, but we don't have a lot of control over the trash stream. So, this is as good as we're going to do. And obviously, if somebody gets fined regularly for being early, they may change their pickup habits.
Well, the other thing, the residents can just say, hey, you're not picking up my trash anymore because you're coming too early.
But then there's a next-door neighbor, though, who gets the same trash guy, and then, you know, whatever, just to-
That is the issue. A lot of times, the person complaining isn't the person who has that trash hauler. Like, I just got one this week. It was not the person, it was not their trash hauler that was coming early, it was another one that's coming up the street.
Got it. Okay, there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Five and oh. Thank you Sandra. Anything else?
Nothing else.
Mario, town engineer?
Yes, the Temple Judea is proposing certain modifications to their parking lot in order to address the tree disturbance issue. The temple surveyors went out, located all the trees along the woodland area there, and their engineers then reestablished the tree protection area as per ordinance, and then they had to modify their edge, that one edge of parking lot. They actually had to move it eight feet away from the woods towards Rogers Road. They, they're angling the parking, the parking count remains the same, all Saldau requirements are met, and as a small added bonus, they're actually decreasing the impervious surface a little bit. I would consider this a field adjustment, which are typical on these type of projects. We would normally handle that, like I said, as a field adjustment. But due to the level of interest of this project, I wanted to bring it to the board's attention.
Thanks. Anybody have any questions or comments? Thanks Mario. Please Chief?
I think I've said enough. Over the last 24 years, I have nothing.
No.
I have nothing at this time. Supervisors, Mr. Tuho?
Yes, good evening. I have two comments. One, once again, a reminder, March 12th is the first meeting of our Alternative Revenue Committee here at 6:00 PM in this room. We encourage everyone, anybody who's interested to come. Also, just a public announcement, on St. Patrick's Day, March 17th, the Bucks County Heroes Scholarship Fund is having a 5K race. I think you can register for that online at copyscore.com. I know they're having, in the spirit of the holiday, they're having corned beef, cabbage, potatoes. Looks like a good event. And if anybody knows the scholarship fund, that's for the fallen officers' scholarships and such for their families. So, certainly a worthwhile cause, and I encourage you to check it out.
Thank you. Mr. Scarborough?
I just want to say, since the chief ran out of words to say, which is unusual, I just want to say, we're going to miss you dearly, and you've done a fantastic job here as a chief and as a policeman for many years, and we're certainly going to miss you.
Thank you for talking. I appreciate it.
Mr. Crowell?
I don't have anything.
Yes, I want to reiterate what Mr. Scarborough said, and just thank Chief White for his work and dedication to the township. You've been the police chief my entire life here. So-
You don't mind helping me out of my chair later on, do you?
So, again, thank you for your commitment to our great town.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to reserve any comments I have for later. The Eagle Scout proclamation is the next item on the agenda for Mr. Kylie from Troop Six.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Congratulations to Mr. Kylie. All in favor of the motion for the proclamation?
Aye.
Aye. His Eagle Scout Court of Honor is March 17th, 2012. I believe it's 2:00 at Doylestown United Methodist. Everybody's welcome. All right, Thompson Toyota Expansion Land Development was on the agenda. It's been taken off by the developer. The next item on the bid, on the agenda, bids for the 2012 equipment with operators' rental and the sign material and post bids. Nick, you need to speak to them? Everybody has the bids in their packet.
They're pretty straightforward and follow the format. The PK Moyer is renewal, and the sign bid is the sign and post bid that we do with the consortium every year.
Move for approval.
Let's start, let's do one at a time. The 2012 equipment with operators' rental, is there a motion, Tom?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the bid?
Aye.
Motion, thank you. And then the sign material and post bid for 2012, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Five and oh, thank you. Declaration of obsolescence, love that word.
Yes, we have a few vehicles from Public Works Code and Police Department, and the recommendation is to declare them obsolete and send them to the auction.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Second? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right, public sewer connection request, 925 Sandy Ridge Road.
Yes, this particular property Mr. Tuho has, has existing buildings on it and existing home that is experiencing some malfunctioning. There is public sewer directly there in the street and is recommended by the Bucks County Health Department and Bucks County Water and Sew Authority to allow the existing property and dwelling to connect into it. And we'd like authorization to have the paperwork go to the state on this.
Is there a motion to approve the public sewer connection on 925 Sandy Ridge?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comment?
Yes, I, every couple of months, we keep coming up with failed septic systems, and this is just another case. And just for edification, this is all, the cost is borne by the property owners, not any tax dollars or anything.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I abstain.
Thank you. Four with one abstention. All right, excited, Shamani Greenway Trail Design Proposals for Phase One and Two. We've heard about the trail designs before. These are the Baker contracts to undertake the designs. Is there a motion to approve? We can do, we'll do one, well-
Some.
Is there a motion to approve the design proposals for Phase One and Two?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And then the healthcare reimbursement for uniform employees. Stephanie, you want to speak to that, please?
Yes, as part of the arbitration award for the police, they receive $300 HRA per officer per year. And that has to be administered in accordance with the IRS Code Section 213. There's quite a bit of requirements and the handling of that. It's recommended through our finance department and myself that we utilize the benefit services of HFS benefit, and that they be able to handle the expenses and reimbursements associated with that. Their first year will be $1,811, future years would be $1,511.
HRA standing for health reimbursement arrangement, okay. Is there a motion to approve the healthcare reimbursement arrangement?
Can I make a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on the healthcare reimbursement arrangement? All in favor?
Aye.
Bill's List, it was sent electronically to most of us for March 6th, 2012. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
The next meeting of this board is scheduled for Tuesday, March 20th, 2012. Daylight savings time, this Sunday, March 11th. Set your clocks ahead one hour and check your smoke detectors. The first, no, this is the second annual, I think, mother-daughter tea and craft is March 25th, it's Sunday, at Del Valle Market. And we're going to host Birdtown Training on March 17th, 9:30 to 2:30 PM in the Activity Center, the red building behind the building. Okay, appointment of acting chief of police.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Arthur Dean Logan in position of acting chief of police.
I'll second that.
Lieutenant Logan comes with the recommendation of Chief White?
Yes, it's a great honor that I make this motion because it signifies two things, the end of my tenure as the chief of police in Doylestown Township, but more importantly, the beginning of Dean's tenure as the acting chief of police pending the regionalization study. Dean has served the township for, since 1987. We prepared him by sending him to the FBI National Academy. He has shown leadership in many areas of police work with us in the ranks that he's held within the police department, but most importantly, by his education, training, family upbringing, and just the general good man that he is. It's an honor that I would ask the board that they pass the motion to name Dean Logan the acting chief of police in Doylestown Township.
Okay, there's a motion, a second now, another motion, and we'll second that one too. It's the same motion.
Yep.
With your edification.
Is he going to accept the position before you vote?
Absolutely.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. The second item, not on the agenda, but, you know, it is on the agenda, the employment agreement with Lieutenant Logan. He was, he was reappointed in January, but he's without contract, so we're going to, I moved that his contract be authorized with review by the solicitor. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now, it's my happy, it's my happy task to, happy sad task to ask Chief to come up and I want to recognize the people that I recognize in the, in the assembly here. Representative Margaret Quinn is here, Mary Hop Holinsky, Holinsky and her husband Dave from New Brittonborough, New Brittonborough Council, and the mayor of New Brittonborough, Chief Metten from Penridge Regional Police Department, Rick Gaver, former supervisor, Frank LaRosa, former supervisor who was tenured at the time Steve White was hired, Dwayne, Chief from, Dwayne Howesner from Plumstead Township. Who else is here there?
Chief McIntyre.
Oh.
Chief McIntyre.
Is that, Chief McIntyre?
Ooh, we need to talk.
Former-
Who else is here?
Former sergeant, FBI agent, Brad Zorn, from the New York Office of the FBI.
They let you out, huh?
Yeah.
Welcome, everybody. We have, we have created a resolution, as is our custom in Doylestown Township when folks are retiring. Tom, would you give me a hand with this stuff?
Sure.
Wait you through your service revolver. And your badge too, and your badge too. So, you're just ordinary Steve after that.
Okay, now you're going to learn who Steve White really is. This resolution is long, bear with me, but it's worth, it's worth stating. Resolution 1616 of the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Doylestown County of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, recognizing Stephen J. White for his 38 years of service to Doylestown Township. Whereas Stephen J. White was hired as a patrolman in the Doylestown Township Police Department on February 16th, 1974. Whereas Stephen J. White was promoted to the rank of sergeant on January 1st, 1975. Whereas Stephen J. White was promoted to the rank of lieutenant on June 6th, 1978. Whereas Stephen J. White was appointed chief of police on January 12th, 1988, and later as township's emergency management coordinator, supervising a staff of 21 officers, three civilian staff members, and overseeing an annual budget of $3 million. And whereas Chief White was honored with the Bucks County Bar Association William Penn 1685 Award in 1997, recognizing his contributions to the criminal justice system and to the Bucks County community. Whereas Chief White was inducted into the International Police Association's Hall of Fame in 1999. And whereas Chief White was recognized as an extraordinary member by the FBI National Academy Associates in August of 2007. Whereas Chief White was recognized as the Central Bucks Sartoma Man of the Year and received the Service to Mankind Award in 19, excuse me, in 2009. Whereas Chief White has been a member of the International Associations of Chief of Police since 1988, and has served as the parliamentarian and member of the Board of Directors, and as a member of the following committees, the Executive Committee, Environmental Crimes Committee, Constitution and Rules Committee, Elections Commission, Legislative Committee, and the Juvenile Justice Committee. And whereas Chief White has been a member of the Pennsylvania Chiefs of, Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association since 1988, and served as president of the association in 1988, and 1998, excuse me, and served as a member of the Executive Committee. And whereas Chief White has been a member of the Pennsylvania Chapter of the FBI National Academy Associates since 1979, member of the Board of Directors, and was elected president in 1997. Whereas Chief White has served as president and is a member of the Executive Committee on both the southeastern Pennsylvania and Bucks County Chiefs of Police Associations. And whereas Chief White served as a commissioner on the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, served on the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission, the Compliance Monitoring Advisory Committee, the Homeland Security Agency, the Law Enforcement Subcommittee, the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, the Public Safety Advisory Committee, as chairman of the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, and was appointed by the County of Bucks to serve on the Board of Managers for the Edison Youth Center. Whereas Chief White has dedicated his career to serving and protecting the public, and has spent the past 38 years of his life devoted to serving and protecting the residents of Doylestown Township, excuse me. Now, therefore, being resolved by the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors, that Stephen J. White be recognized for his 38 years of service and dedication to the Doylestown Township Police Department, the residents of Doylestown Township, and to this community. Duly resolved, this 6th day of March, 2012, signed by the entire member.
Well, this is a great tribute to a great person who is well-respected, not only in Bucks County and Doylestown, but throughout the state. It's amazing, when I go out to PISA convention and I say I'm from Doylestown, they said, oh, that's where Steve White's from. I said, how do you know Steve White? Oh, he's been involved in various organizations throughout the state, and everybody seems to know him and respect him. And it gives a great honor to Doylestown to understand where this gentleman comes from and what Doylestown's all about. And he's a great reflection on this. So, I'm just going to say to Mr. Logan, you've got a big pair of, you better grow your shoulders out a little bit further to carry all that weight, but, no, but congratulations. And I would like to give this to Stephen White, who has served as our chief at Doylestown Township, and with great honor and respect, and we're so proud of you, and, but we're certainly glad that you can retire with all your health and enjoy your life from here on, so.
Thank you very much.
As is tradition, this is just a small token of appreciation from Doylestown Township that we bestow upon all of our retirees. It has been an honor and a pleasure to have worked with Chief White for the past 25 years that I've been with the township. I've learned a lot, and I'm going to miss him, and wish him all the best in his retirement, along with Janine, his wife, and their family. All the best, Chief.
Representative Quinn?
Good evening, and thank you very much for inviting me to join you tonight. It's certainly an honor to be here. And as Barbara said, I don't think you used the word bittersweet, but I feel it's bittersweet. I sat back there and, after Ryan's comment and hearing the 1974 year, it dawned on me, oh my gosh, I've lived in Doylestown Township for 40 years. And when my parents moved here in 1972, they were attracted to, well, Dad loved to hunt, and they were just moving out here, and part of it was just the beauty of Bucks County, and why that still remains, I think in the years, people still move here for that, but they also move here for a certain quality of life, a quality of life that I think we can lay, not just to all of those people who have served on the township and on the state level before me, but to you and the police force that you've built over the years, the safety elements that we have here, the peace of mind we just take for granted that we live in Doylestown. And actually, as we saw, a little wave of- And actually, as we saw a little wave of crimes this year, I think we could all agree, we were pretty shocked, because that just doesn't happen here. Whether that's because of the, the whole community at large, I'm sure that has something to do with it, but I really want to thank you for your contribution and role and in making Doylestown such a safe community, one in which that I chose to raise my family. I appreciate that. Steve, Chief White, you have been a role model, not just for our children, but for, for all of us. I mean, we see you at races, not just in the police car, but running the races and usually, you know, we're all in your dust, winning the races in all different age groups. I've spoken to, you know, a number of friends who have gotten involved in triathlons and such and telling me just what a wonderful mentor you are, actually holding back to say, "Come on, swim through that lake," et cetera. You have been a wonderful voice to the seniors I represent, always willing to give your time and to share with them, in part, your knowledge that you've not just shared with them, but you've shared on a national level with different fraud against seniors and different safety. You're really it. I mean, I've thought about that Superman costume that I should bring. But instead, I brought a citation from the state and on behalf of Pennsylvania's House of Representatives, the 143rd Legislative District, and I'm sure Senator McLeheny would be here if they weren't in session right now, but I wanted to thank you. Barbara has certainly read your resume and then some, and it's my citation, I've missed some of those things, but I'm not gonna read them all again. I just want to give you a heartfelt thanks on behalf of the constituents of the 143rd District. Your tenure, your service here has gone beyond the boundaries of Doylestown Township, well into the borough. And as I look around to the other police, Chief Hassanauer here from Plumstead, it's, all of you work together to provide a great, safe, wonderful community in which we live. So, not just the citation, but I'd like to present you with an American flag and a state flag, often forgotten, but I see it up there. Thank you very much for your service.
While, while they're assembling, does any, anyone else burning besides Frank wanna say anything to the chief? That we can't say, that we can say in public?
My name is Frankie LaRosa. I too, at one time, was a supervisor, but that was so long ago, like Mrs. Magnon says. We didn't know about police departments. Watching that campaign for police protection, got in, and all we had at that time was the state police, and they would be here as they saw fit. However, we thought about building up the department and we then got our first chief. But however, that chief was part-time chief in New Britain, Warwick, and all over. So you were kinda just part-timing. Then we decided we should get a whole force. And we started to interview people, and we had about three or four people, then we had to get a chief. And when you appointed the chief, I don't want to go into that side of it, Chief and I know about that. However, then in the early 70s, we had to get more people on our force. And I've been here since 1948 and I'm not a city kid, but I watch the news and I see policemen from the cities. And I think, looking at that, they were probably nourished on Budweiser, they remind me of Smiling Jack with Wimpy with buttons bouncing off them. Then, a guy walks into our interview, by the name of Steve White. Ever see how Steve walks? I think he's got a board in the back, he's always got full attention. "I wanna check your back sometime." Steve comes in, I said, "What have we got here? This is not what I see on TV." We interviewed Steve, his credentials were incredible, Barbara talked about them, from the, I saw, I saw FBI and I saw DC, I fell in love with the guy. We brought Steve on, but we put him through a multitude of tests, even our dear friend, Dr. Noth, who's a psychologist. He said, "Frank, we gotta get this guy, he's a winner." I'm very fortunate over the years, we brought Steve on board and in my years of employment, I've had the occasion to bring on a lot of personnel. I want you to know, I feel I should get the Academy Award, or the Hall of Fame, or you hear about this great guy, who brought him here? I did, what am I getting? I'm getting Buckus, I'm getting Buckus here. Steve, thank you for your friendship. I got the hook, Barbara took me off. Not the first time she did it. One of the finest friends that I have.
Thank you, Frank. Janine and Michelle and her husband Kevin, would you please stand? Maybe you want to come up and join your, your dad and husband at this point? Well, that's Janine, the wife, Michelle, the daughter, and Kevin, the son-in-law. Best son-in-law. I'm gonna let the chief finish off and, and I'm sure there are gonna be pictures after, in addition to cake and treats back there. But I want you to all know that, well, I don't need to tell you my personal thoughts, I think they're pretty evident, and everything that has been said about him, I can say three times over. But I want you to know that he's not going far. He's gonna stay a member of this community and as the Central Bucks explores policing in the future, Chief has agreed to stay on and act as, you know, help us out through that process. So, his expertise and his devotion to this community, well, we're gonna continue to tap into that. So, with that, on behalf of everybody in this room, I'm sure, all the best and don't go far. We love you.
The, with people reading my background, you might think that I've never been here working as Chief of Police for all the things. You have to remember, as Ryan pointed out, that it's, 38 years is a very long time and 24 years as Chief of Police is a very long time. But in, in February, I did celebrate the 38th anniversary of my hiring here in Doylestown Township, and in the next two weeks, I will celebrate my 39th wedding anniversary with my wife, Janine. I'm sure she's saying something funny back there right now. I have to be very grateful to her because of all the hours and all the times coming and going to the Police Department, it was always leaving the family. And I remember one time, Michelle was dragging on my leg as a baby, saying she didn't want me to go back in. But we have to remember that all the men and women that are here have families and we have some of the finest officers and people that have been here and do work for the Police Department that have been here in the past. As Frank pointed out, there are 18 names on that Board of Supervisors. I've actually worked for every one of them because the first one on that list is Frank LaRosa. But I am so grateful to all the members of the Board of Supervisors, the ones that are here, even the ones that were in playpens when I started, that... But I'm eternally grateful to the men and women of the Doylestown Township Police Station, to, to a person, they are unbelievably outstanding. I will be very brief, I remember that when I did ask the Board if I could accept an appointment to one of the Chiefs Associations in the beginning of my tenure as Chief, they asked me what were they gonna get out of it? And then I told them, hopefully, a more confident Chief of Police on the cutting edge of information technology and a witness to the leadership of the men and women that are Chiefs of Police throughout the United States and throughout the world. And I have had that, and I think that my confidence has been built watching other great leaders in their jobs. And I will say that we have had some of the finest officers, we've had some of the most interesting police-related calls, we've had heartache, we've had happiness. I often say that I could go down every street in the township and tell a story, almost in every house, in every, every block of the township. Some of them would break your heart and some of them would make you laugh. We wouldn't be able to use the names or Chris McIntyre, his Chief Accounting Detectives, would be arresting me. Chris and I went to the State Police Academy together. We went when we were babies, like Ryan was when she started, in 1974. But I, I don't want to take a long time and say thank you, but you have no idea, I've driven down Wells Road and turned in this driveway since October of 1973. That really is a long time ago. I will be eternally grateful to the Board of Supervisors and to all of you and to all the employees, past and present in the Doylestown Township, and thank you very much for the honor for serving you as your Chief of Police.
You want to say a few words?
I'd like to, first of all, before I thank the Board, I'd like to thank Chief White for all the years of inspiration, leadership, and the training that you gave me to take your job so that. I really do appreciate it. You will be missed. To the Board of Supervisors, I know it's an acting position at this time. The merger is a good idea. If the merger does not go through, if the Board of Supervisors determines that it's not for us, I would be honored to serve in this capacity for as long as you'll have me. Thank you. I would like to introduce my fiancee, Diane Cleland here.
Hi, Diane. I just want to thank you all for giving him a job. Thanks, Steve. Oh, yeah, as Director of Public Safety, that would be me. Guys in uniform, ladies in uniform, you want to come up for one good picture and then we'll leave. If there's a motion to adjourn.
Some more.
Second.